Good evening, everyone. Am I on? Can you hear me?
Yep.
I feel like it's -- oh, there we go. Thanks, guys. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a meeting of the Hundred and Central Regional High School Board of Education. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the board are open to the public and media, consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act, and that advance notice required therein has been provided. Meeting notice was also posted in the boardroom of the upper school campus, sent to the Courier News, Star Ledger, Express Times, and the Hundred and County Democrat, and sent to the clerks of Delaware Township, East Amwell Township, Flemington Borough, Raritan Township, and Reddington Township. The public will have an opportunity to be heard, as shown on the agenda. Please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to remind everyone that the governor's mask mandate is still in effect for indoors in schools, and the board does not condone any violations of the mask mandate. Okay, so we've got lots of correspondence this month, all of which are listed on the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Moving ahead. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Here.
Dr. Charney?
Here.
Mr. Davidson?
Here.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Here.
Mr. Nickel?
Here.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
Here.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Here. Thank you. Okay, so lots of correspondence that are listed on the agenda, attached in board docs. And then we'll move right into Dr. Moore's superintendent report.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I want to begin tonight. Benjamin Douse graduated with distinction from Hundred and Central last school year. And while here, he was involved in marching band, and fencing, volleyball, and much more. He was a great student here, remembered by all of his teachers and others, with love and admiration. An aspiring doctor, excelling at his studies at Cornell. Benjamin was a red devil in all that the promise of this places, you know, hopes in for each of our students. Ben died the result of a tragic accident late last month, so I'm asking everyone to just please join me in a moment of silence as we honor him, his family, his friends, Thank you. Thank you. Benjamin Douse, remembered fondly, never forgotten. We're also thinking tonight and celebrating Kimmy Getz, who competed in Beijing yesterday morning in a thrilling, incredible half-minute of speed skating. She'll be up again in the 1,000-meter event on the 17th. It was incredible, awe-inspiring stuff to see as she represents our country and our community at the Games, as one of the best among the best athletes of our day. We're sending Kimmy, we're sending you our best wishes and our admiration, and we'll keep an eye on you as you continue to compete. Tonight, we have an additional presentation in the series of presentations we've been doing from our curriculum department. Mrs. Jessica Cangelosihade has been working with the Student Life and Program Committee to facilitate those presentations this school year. I'm going to turn it over now to Dr. Laura Aradondo, who is going to come up to the podium and tell us about the ongoing work toward opportunity on authentic communication in our World Languages Department. And I'll get set up here for you. Laura?
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Good evening, board members and public. I'm really excited to have this opportunity to share with you news from the World Languages Department. I am more than proud of our students, and I'm really pleased to share with you what for sure has been the highlight of my professional career as an educator. So if you go to the next slide, our new New Jersey Student Learning Standards for World Languages, if you take a moment and read that, I'm not going to read them for you, but I'd like to say overall, the spirit of these standards promotes the idea that communicative competency in a world language is a very practical and necessary 21st-century skill for all students. And it is extremely important for students in careers and as well as in studies in higher education. And it also reflects the spirit of our world language programs at Hundred and Central, where I'm really proud to watch a change where we see more and more students understanding that they too are part of our high-quality world language program, and they have access to all programs. You can go on to the next slide. So when I graduated from high school very long ago, of course, I was a world language kid. I studied French and Spanish. I don't know if you graduated along the same time I do, but we had achievement tests in the subject areas, and I remember taking the achievement test in French and Spanish. And a lot has really changed since then. These tests in those days were multiple-choice tests with a focus on grammar and structure. There was also this focus on learning a language so you could compare it to English, become more knowledgeable about the structure of English. And students were really challenged to identify things such as parts of speech and other structures like that. And now we've had this transition to tests where students interpret authentic materials, they read, they listen to authentic texts and recordings, and they respond to prompts with oral and written language. And this is very similar to the proficiency tests that our students have been taking for the Seal of Bili literacy, which I'll talk about in a little bit. But both the AP Advanced Placement as well as the IB International Baccalaureate Tests now follow are aligned to these updated standards. They're not the tests they were when I was in high school, and I would venture to say when you were in high school. Students are expected to communicate in the language and be able to do so. When I studied Spanish in high school and I first went to a region where Spanish was spoken, it was jarring. It took about three weeks for me to find my footing and remember and recognize that what was being spoken around me was really Spanish. And the other big change is on the AP Test and the IB Tests, as well as on these proficiency tests and in the classroom, there is recognition of global languages, and students are exposed to authentic materials, voices from all over the world. For example, when I studied French in high school, most of the French that we were exposed to was the French from France. Now, all over the Francophone world, students have an opportunity to listen to French from North Africa, from Quebec, as well as from France and Belgium. And that's extremely important for our students. You can go on to the next slide. So I'm going to be talking throughout the next couple of minutes, and there have been some changes. I don't have an hour here, but I could go on for an hour. I've seen a lot of changes in the past couple of years with this unfortunate pandemic, which has caused so many changes and unfortunately, a real loss in instructional time. So here's one of the big things that we see the most change in. It used to be pretty consistently, from the time I started here in 2016 on, that the number of students in Spanish was about equal to the number of students in all the other language programs. So you can see for each grade level, that's not true anymore. The smaller language programs, the enrollment has gone down. And the anecdotal information I get from students is that they're concerned with the pandemic, the last loss of instructional time, and they're more reluctant to take risks with a language other than Spanish, because most of them have had the opportunity to study Spanish since elementary school. Now, I was a Spanish teacher. Spanish is extremely important, but our other language programs are fantastic and really strong, and I can't wait till this is all over with and we can reinforce those programs and have students ready to take those risks again. You can go on. So kind of reflective of that number, this has held steady. We now only have one Chinese teacher. We did have one and a half, but we did have four French teachers, for example. Now we have three. These are a number of teachers in each department, and that's reflective of the overall enrollment, with Spanish taking more than half at this point of the entire department. And we also are constrained, as well as supported, by the fantastic language programs in our four sending districts. You can see that two of our smaller sending districts, Delaware and East Amwell, only Spanish is offered in those districts. Flemre has French and Spanish, and Reddington offers Chinese, French, and Spanish. So there is no German, and there is no Latin, so students must begin their studies of those languages here in the high school. We thought it was very important to reach out to the students in the sending districts and the families. So when I first started in 2016, I continued what was our second annual visit to the middle schools at that point, and we present a program about world languages to all of the eighth-grade students, just to help them make a better choice when they come to the high school. And we also do our best to animate students, to have them choose a language that they're really interested in and will enjoy. We also, of course, as the other departments, we participate in articulation meetings. We meet regularly with world language teachers from the sending districts. And our students actually initiated this World Language Night event, which takes place in the spring, which is a fair-like event. The students set up booths where they share crafts and food, and that's also an evening where we recognize the recipients of the Seal of Bili literacy. So we're looking forward to doing that in April. Last year, we returned to that after a year of not being able to have it, so we're always really excited. I'm always really excited to celebrate the achievement of the students. There's nothing better for an educator than to do that. You can go on to the next slide. I'm also really proud that we are a New Jersey Department of Education model program, our world languages. This is basically a program run by the state. The process is, we submitted an application in 2019. In the application, we had the opportunity to present our strengths. Here's an example of what we consider to be our strengths. Our updated instructional practices, using a thematic approach with authentic themes. One thing that the committee was very impressed with is our student self and peer assessment. And also, our providing extending learning experiences through cultural clubs, and we have the German-American Partnership Program and other partnerships with other schools abroad. And also our focus on expanding equity through the New Jersey Seal of Bili literacy, and I'll speak about that in a couple of moments. So the purpose of the world language model programs are that, the purpose is that these districts provide leadership to other districts in the state. And unfortunately, we had a visit from the New Jersey Department of Education in February, right before everything closed down. In this visit, they had interviews with students and teachers, they visited our classrooms, they were particularly impressed with our students, because our students were able to talk about the proficiency guidelines and what level they were at, what level they had achieved in their world language study. And I really felt that it was very important that we approached this as a team, and so I created a schedule where DOE members were able to visit every single teacher in the department. And I was able to share with the teachers how proud we were of all of them, and we stand behind their good work. And so it was really just a wonderful morale builder, a real team approach, and we were very excited about that. So unfortunately, this is the unfortunate part. We were supposed to be able to host visits from other districts, and as you know, most of that didn't happen. I did have many phone calls from other districts for general guidance, and we are starting to get requests for visits, so we're really pleased about that. And of course, we learn too. We learn from sharing with colleagues, they learn from us. It's really a great opportunity for everybody, and I'm really proud of this district. It puts us on the map, as far as I'm concerned. We've also been invited, I've been invited as a supervisor and other department members to participate in state committees, which is an important recognition for our district and reflects all of our good work. You can go on to the next slide. So I want to talk a little bit about equity in world languages and what exactly that means. So when we first started with the Seal of Bili literacy program, we had self-selected testing, as most districts do. And that means that we put this opportunity out to students and we said, hey, if you want to take this test, you can demonstrate proficiency, and upon graduation, you can get the Seal of Bili literacy. And although I visited every classroom, we opened this up for juniors and seniors of any level. Only students in the honors AP track took the test. They came on Saturdays and they took the test. So it was really a signal to us about what equity means. And the study of world languages is, when the academic study of a subject starts in the middle school years, children should feel like they are on a somewhat equal playing field. There's no reason for students to divide themselves up into, I'm in the honors track, I'm in the non-honors track. And for the community, myself included, to have expectations that one group of students is going to gain proficiency in another language, and another group of students is going to merely fulfill their graduation requirements, that's inequity. You know, so this really kind of underlined to me, and Dr. Moore also encouraged me to think outside of the box and look for opportunities to make sure that this was extended to all students in our program. So that's exactly what we did. We opened this opportunity, and every student had the opportunity to take the proficiency test during their world language classes. So the first year that we did that, we saw a slight increase in the students in the non-honors track earning the Seal of Bili literacy, and then the year after that, they just broke through the ceiling, and you'll see that on the next slide. But I also wanted to say that another important part of equity is validating the knowledge that students have, and that means validating their linguistic knowledge. We have so many resources in this district. I was so surprised, so many students requesting to take the test in a language other than English. And of course, we know we have many speakers of Spanish in the community, but I'm talking about languages like the ones there. I realize I didn't put Turkish on the list, but students taking a test in Polish, Portuguese, Romanian. Last year, I found a test in Bulgarian and contacted Sofia University in Bulgaria for one student. And many of these students, just the fact that there's a test available for them, you know, the look on their faces, this is what I'm talking about when I talk about really one of the most satisfying moments in my professional life, the look of validation, like, wow, my knowledge counts for something, really, really very exciting. So from the beginning, we had several students qualify in two languages other than English. Most of them were French and Spanish. And last year, we had our first student qualify in three languages in English, and she qualified in German, Spanish, both of those which she learned at Hundred and Central, as well as modern Greek, which was her heritage language. So you can see this list of different tests. We've provided testing in all of these languages, and like I said, this year also Turkish. We will have a Seal of Bili literacy recipient in some of these languages this year. You can go on to the next slide. So again, our heritage speakers, again, we're talking about a very rich resource here. We do have a heritage Spanish program. Be really nice to have a heritage program in other languages as well, but we have a large population of Spanish heritage speakers. And that's also something that we've been working very hard on, is to create this pathway from the heritage Spanish students to AP Spanish. And when we did this class-by-class analysis of Seal of Bili literacy recipients from past years, we haven't quite gotten there this year because Mr. Roberto helped me on Friday, just Friday, when we got the last results in, so I could present this data to you. But in prior years, the students in the AP class had the greatest percentage of meeting the proficiency requirements for the Seal of Bili literacy, with one exception, and that exception was the heritage Spanish program. 100% of those students demonstrated the proficiency to be eligible for the Seal of Bili literacy. And for world language teachers and linguists, that's not a surprise at all, and I think it's notable, and it's really important for us to recognize that knowledge and celebrate it, just as we recognize the knowledge of all students. So you can go on. So here's a chart. I have some graphs. You'll notice in 2017 and 18, this was the first year, 16, 17 was the first year that New Jersey had the Seal of Bili literacy. 2015, 16 was a pilot year. Some districts did it, but Hundred and Central did not participate. So that first year, and 2017 and 2018, students selected themselves, and they came to the school and they tested on Saturday. And you'll notice that we had 87% of the recipients were from the honors AP tracks. In 2019, this is when we made the change and brought the testing into the world language classroom, and every student enrolled in world language in an upper-level world language course had the opportunity to take the proficiency test. And you can see here that in 2019, a couple of kids from the non-honors track earned the Seal of Bili literacy. Now, that year, I went into the classrooms and I urged them, I said, you can do this, and they heard, and even more in 2020 did so. And if you notice, the percentage in honors track, it's amazing to me that that goes from 87% to 83 to 77%. That's a very significant decline. So that means an increase in students in the non-honors tracks earned the Seal of Bili literacy. Now, 2021, not a happy year for anybody. We had to have a remote testing, and that was self-selected. So again, even though our overall numbers were good that year, and that was basically due to the number of juniors who qualified in 2020, we went right back up there. 94% of the students were from the honors track. This year, that's come down a little bit with the in-person testing, but seeing this, I just felt, you know, this is an estimate, by the way, the 2022 numbers, that we're seeing 17% of graduates earning the Seal of Bili literacy, 84% from the honors tracks. But I just feel inspired by these numbers, even though I know right now, we have a lot of work to do, we want to get back there. I mean, it's very clear to me that the loss of instructional time had a real effect. But when you look at here at the percentage of grads earning the seal, to go from 13.5 to, in 2021, 27.5% of the graduating class, that's phenomenal. I'm so proud of our kids. I mean, it's like, they imagine it, and they do it. And think about that 27.5%, almost a third. Now we're back down to 17%. Ouch. It hurts a little bit, but I promise you, I'm going to do my best to get it back up there. This really gives us a lot of incentive. So you can go on to the next slide. So here's some graphs that kind of show you those numbers in a visual manner. So you can see here, the number of students, the overall number that received, and the percentage goes up, 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 and then this year, we fell down. As you notice, last year, it continued to rise. As I said, that's because we had a very large number of juniors who qualified in 2020. And we test in January, so that was before, remember, we closed in March, so that was before all of that. The number of ELLs who get the Seal of Bili literacy is also something that's very important, but our ELL population fluctuates so much, it's kind of hard to see a trend. I don't think we've had a sample size over 20 of ELL graduates, so that's, you know, probably that measure, we want to see more years to see what kind of trend there is there. You can go on. And again, here's the pathway. As you can see, this nice decline, usually we don't want to say decline, but this decline of numbers of students from the honors track means an increase in students from the non-honors pathway, so something that's open to all students. And again, you see the percentage rising, and then this year, we had a decrease. You can go on. Okay, so this is where I'd like to get more in-depth, and like I said before, really look at class by class, but this is all I had a chance to do, as we just got this data in on Friday. But I wanted to get a look at each section of the test, the LSRW is listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And you'll notice, these are the two years that the conditions were the same, where the students took the test in school, they took the stamp. Last year, when they were remote, we had to use a different test because it had a remote format. And this shows you, I mean, and these were increasing each year, so 2020 and 2022, you can see a marked decrease, particularly in listening and speaking, which is what you would guess with the loss of instructional time. And anecdotally, that's what the teachers have been discussing, that they feel like the students have lost that practice, that facility of being able to speak in the language. Reading and writing also had a smaller decline. There are some anomalies here. Chinese actually showed less of a decrease in speaking and listening, and actually, an increase in writing and reading, but we have a new Chinese program with a new Chinese staff member, and I think that that's probably attributed to that. German also had a big increase in reading. But to me, these kind of anomalies just make the data seem more real. I mean, then you know that this is data, this is how it works. But you can see in speaking, the big differences in most of the languages from 2020 to 2022. You can go on. So, you know, I mean, I'm pleased to see that we were doing so well. Of course, you know, I really had to talk to myself. It was hard to accept this decrease, but then I came to a point that I just said to myself. myself, well, Laura, this shows that kids need the instruction. They need to be there, we need to be there. And I have to say, the world language teachers were feeling that every day. And we just wanted to pull the kids in and have them there. I have to tell you myself, more than any other year, I've dedicated many hours to meeting kids after school and helping them make up these tests because of quarantine or arranging special tests for those less common language, because it is so important for equity that all students have their knowledge validated and be represented. And I didn't want any students to miss this opportunity because they couldn't be in school those days. And that is really, I have to tell you, the look on the kids' faces, when I told one girl in a smaller, a less common language that she qualified, I mean, the look of joy, there's, there's nothing better than that as a, as a lifelong educator. It is so rewarding. So yes, that's my, our department goals. I'm going to, you know, look into this data a little bit further, going to present it to the department this week, even though I've already shared the results, we're going to really get into it. We're going to get back on this path to success. I'm not going to spend too much time on what if this hadn't happened, where would we be? We're going to just get right back there. We have established benchmarks, which was a focus given to us by the board. We have speaking benchmarks that we use for all levels. It's a test that's administered by teachers and they are standards-aligned tests, just like the stamp. And we're going to continue to use the stamp and ALIRA data, as well as that benchmark data to inform our instruction. Right now, we know focus on speaking and listening is really, really important. We've got to get these kids back on track, make them feel capable. And we're going to continue to work to align pathways and access for all learners. And that's what equity means in world languages. It means all learners. It means you start your serious academic study of French in seventh grade or sixth grade and you do well, that honors AP class, you should feel capable to go into that track and to do well. And that's what we're doing our best to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Quick question, and I know for the board members have any questions as well. You and I have chatted a little bit and with Mrs. Candy Lizzie Hade also. Schools across the state are seeing similar results from what you're hearing from your colleagues. Can you speak to that just a little bit?
Sure. So Dr. Moore always gives me a little homework. So last week, when I shared this with him, he said, how are the other districts doing? So we have a great New Jersey network of world language supervisors. So I was like, oh, I'll reach out. And I'm getting responses. And yeah, this has been across the board. There are a few districts that have reported an increase or pretty much they stayed the same. And when I questioned them further, those districts are still doing the self-selected testing. I'm really proud, I have to say, that we, you know, the, the state has been tooting us as an example of opening up this testing for all kids and how important it is. And I'm seeing more and more districts do that. And I thank you because I feel like it's the support of the board and the community that have allowed us to do that. And it's made such a huge difference for these kids. It really has.
Just wanted to thank you for this wonderful presentation and congratulate you and the world language teachers for the wonderful progress you've made, especially in the area of authentic performance-based assessment, which is hopefully a direction in which education in general is going. So you're kind of leading the way there. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Aradondo, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So a few more items for my report tonight. My COVID update tonight is, is hopeful. It reflects some conversations that we've had with one of the subcommittees here on the board. And it also brings news of really a level of cooperation and, and really answering our concerns from the Department of Health about the kinds of information we were getting. So I want to share some thoughts with you as I sum up some of the conversations we've been having on the board's reopening committee, and then certainly invite the boards to dialogue further here in my report, if there are questions or other thoughts. I am thinking towards the board adjusting our opening plan, potentially as soon as the, the meeting on the 28th. So some of the thoughts I'm presenting tonight may be things that you want to consider then. The reopening committee met regularly throughout most of the pandemic, sometimes two to three times each month, and came together again recently and is on the agenda to be chartered again for continued work in this context of rapidly shifting conditions and, and guidance. So I'd like to share, let's see, I'll get a couple of these slides up here for you. And let's see if that's working. Okay. So tonight, talking a bit about where we are and lessons learned and other sorts of changes that have come up in the past few weeks as we come out of this Omicron surge and head into some more hopeful times. This is the opening plan that we've been following this year. Yeah, folks, you can see it. The opening plan we've been following this year pretty tightly through each level of community spread, as indicated in those weekly state reports. And I'll come back to this point again, I've mentioned it many times here. The weekly reports from the state are lagged by about a week. So when we get that weekly report, it's actually reporting on data from last week. And, some noisy children in there. And the reports cover a tri-county area. They don't just deal with our own local area, they cover Somerset, Mercer and Hunterin County and aggregate that all together. So those are two significant issues that I've had with those reports. A, the data are a week old and B, it's not local. So local and timely have been two things that we've been looking for. And the Department of Health has stepped up their efforts to get us local and timely data. And that's been giving us some additional flexibility. Now, one of the things I want to point out here, and again, this is the plan we've been following all this year. One of the things I want to point out is we went to the yellow level in last week's report. So if you look at that second row of masking and...
Can you enlarge?
I can enlarge that. Yeah, let me come over here. So if you look at the, the second row on masking, so we spent some time over the summer in a voluntary masking posture because we were in green and yellow over the summer. And then the governor's mandate for masking to come back as a, as a requirement in schools came down in August. And so we had to mask up for September. And then we started to move into orange and then ultimately red through the last month, last several weeks. So under our plan this year, we've been masked because either the conditions were high enough to warrant it on our plan, or there was a mandate in effect that required it. So with the mandate being lifted on the 7th, and we're in yellow, if we made no changes at all, we'd be in a position to move to a mask optional posture, based on the plan that we've been following this year. Unless mandated, otherwise voluntary indoors and outdoors on campus. And this language coming from the Department of Health strongly encouraged for unvaccinated, but, but still optional. I do have to note, still right now, on transportation, on conveyances and the, the way the regulation reads from the federal government is conveyances. It doesn't say public transportation, it doesn't specify these kinds of conveyance. It just says on conveyances, masking is still required. That comes from the federal government and the CDC and the state government doesn't have jurisdiction to allow masking to go by the wayside on our buses. So you'll see in what I come up, when I bring up the next screen, you'll see that we're still talking about masking on transportation as we do, as we do here, as we did last summer. So come back. Some of the things that have changed recently, and I'll go through this very quickly. Lessons learned, we've had a significant increase in our capacity to make adjustments. And the example I use there is for this year, this year for the first time, we moved to four lunches. That's been in our plan for some time, but this is the first time that conditions in our plan led us to move to four lunches. And what we discovered in four lunches was that we can actually maintain, we can achieve and maintain a lot of the spacing that can help us stay open full days. And, you know, we're looking at that now as a, as a way to avoid any sort of closure or early dismissals in the future. Omicron also really put us to task. We saw really enormous levels of spread, unlike we've seen at any other time throughout our community. But we managed to continue to move forward on offering as much in-person instruction as our plan could allow. Districts that closed for several weeks after the end of winter break, we weren't in that kind of situation. We did have to, for a couple of weeks, go to a shortened schedule, but we were able to move back out of that as soon as the, the conditions shifted out of red. And lastly, as I mentioned earlier, the Department of Health is working a lot more closely with us, districts across the entire county, to give us more timely and localized data. In fact, we have a meeting again this week on Thursday. And what, what's been, what we've been getting in those meetings are, are the actual conditions in the moment in our area, rather than last week's conditions across three counties. So it's been, it's been helpful to allow us to, to consider more flexible decision-making with their, with their consultation. So last week, I mentioned Governor Murphy announced the mask mandate would end. And basically what he's done is, is re-upped the public health emergency for an additional 30 days and then has promised to let it go by the wayside from there. So come March 7th, if we're in yellow, which it looks like every indication is that we're going to remain in yellow, that under our current plan, we'd be able to move to a mask optional posture. We also are waiting on, the second piece of his announcement last week was that the Department of Health would be releasing new rules and not just on masking, but on everything. So we're anticipating and hoping for some changes to things like distancing and contact tracing, all those things. We're hoping that those are captured for changes in the guidance as well, but we do have to wait and see. They have promised to release those rules before the 7th, but I, I am not certain that we'll get them before the 28th. If you're, if you're thinking about making some changes to the plan, we just have to be aware that we might get some rules that, that lead us to continue to make some adjustments. So we talked about our current opening plan and the reopening committee met and discussed, based on all of those factors, some additional ideas and thoughts for the boards to consider and again, potentially vote on as a change in our plan on the 28th. So what I'll do is I'll back out of this again and... So we can zoom in on this a little bit better. So we've been talking a lot about lunch and I am eager to get back to once, one lunch period as quickly as we can. And we're feeling confident, based on the case numbers and other kinds of indicators of, of disease spread over the past couple of weeks. We've had many days now over the past week and a half or so of, of no cases to report. And we're really pleased with that. Right now, I currently have today, nine students out of 27, 2800. Nine students were home today as a result of either being ill with COVID or being home on quarantine as a close contact. So nine students compared to the nearly 200 to 300 that we were seeing at the height of the Omicron spread. So things have definitely collapsed on that variant precipitously. And we were expecting that. I'm just glad that it came as early as it did. So we would still, you know, depending on different situations, we could still in green consider to be on two lunch blocks, but I would hope that we can get to one as soon as possible. And even in yellow, there's a possibility, I imagine, of us being able to get to one lunch block. One of the things that exists in this modified plan is across all levels and across all operations, this gray box out here indicates that if in working with the county medical community and working with the Department of Health, we find an opportunity with them to move more aggressively toward a normal stance out of any of these mitigations that we've adopted, then by all means, you know, we're ready to do that. The one concern I do have about moving back to one lunch, and this is something we, we're working on in terms of planning, is the beginning of the year is a very stressful time for our kids as they determine what feels sometimes like turf around lunch. Who sits where? Who gets what table? Where, where does everybody sit? And over the years, we've certainly recognized that there is a lack of seating, especially on poor weather days for all students. And, you know, we do have students who do opt to sit on the floor, but we, we also have students for whom sometimes when we have a rainy or a cold day, there isn't necessarily a seat for them outside of the floor on, on a unit lunch, one lunch block day. So we are worried about A, having seating for everyone who wants it, and B, worried about dropping that renegotiation of turf right in the middle of this school year right now. So we're working on that. We're, we're employing a couple of different plans to increase our seating with some temporary seating across campus. And we're looking forward to the moment that the weather gets better as well, so that we can leverage outside toward moving back to a single unit lunch. And I do anticipate, you know, I'm hoping that we get back into green this school year, but even on the lower edge of yellow, I could imagine us feeling well enough based on the numbers that we're facing or lack of numbers to move to one lunch. Masking is our second row here. And what we've done is, again, understanding that at any point, we could be working with the Department of Health on a special local situation. If we have an outbreak, if we have a spike, if we have a concern locally, this week in, in our area, that, that we could adopt all kinds of other mitigations, including masking, including anything else. But we are feeling comfortable to say that in green and yellow, continue to offer a voluntary posture for masking. Again, required on transportation is still the rule from the federal government. And in orange, if we find ourselves in that position again, we may have to, working with the Department of Health and others, consider bringing masking back as a mitigating strategy. With our four lunches, we feel confident that throughout this entire continuum, we can remain on a full day, everyday schedule. And even in red, I think in the lower order of red, we could probably continue to remain on a full day schedule and offer lunch, which is an improvement, an evolution from a plan that we had moving into this year. But there could be levels of red at which we may need to decide to alter our schedule or, or take other steps. We do not really see a need, again, given the, the ability to move to four lunches, given the, the, all the strategies that our teachers and other staff have for, for spacing, we do not see a need in any of these levels to move to cohorts again, like we did last year, although we could imagine some upper red conditions where that could be something that we had to consider. And then these others on sanitization, special purpose facilities, plexiglass barriers. Special purpose facilities is the one I want to mention the most here, because when we get up into orange and red, that's when we have to start considering the demands of enhanced sanitization in our facility and what that requires of our operations crew and limits their ability to support outside users. So we are fully open again for outside users. We did have to close our facilities to outside users during some of that red phase that we were in over the past couple of weeks, but we are now fully open again and welcoming all those folks back into the facility and, and happy to, to do so. Again, lessons learned here though, you know, we may be able to hang on a little bit longer before closing those facilities to outside users, based on some of the scheduling and other sanitization kinds of lessons learned that we have in our operations department. And again, just to reiterate, throughout this whole potentially new scheme, in every level of activity, green, yellow, orange and red, and across every operation, staying closely in touch with our partners, Department of Health and the medical community, to determine if there are other things that we need to do or other opportunities we have to step back and recover even more normalcy. And the other change here, on our old plan, all of these different things in red, I think what we've learned in red, having been through it now, is on any given day, what the situation is like here in our local area... it now, is on any given day, what the situation is like here in our local area, being able to have some flexibility to deploy some of these interventions and pull back on them when they're needed, rather than in response to just now we're red from last week's data, you know, being able to be flexible in terms of deploying those and then pulling back on them, staying in, in frequent contact with the Department of Health to make those determinations. We're finding, you know, flexibility now is, is a more of a, a, a calling card of this, of this plan. So that's where we are. My last slide is just a, an, an outro slide here, but that's where we are in terms of the discussions from the reopening committee. Any members of the reopening committee, if I missed anything, please offer anything that I missed from anybody who was there. Does that sound good? All right. So I, I have a couple more items to discuss quickly before my report's over, but I did want to offer the board some time now, or if they'd rather take it later, if you'd rather take it later, to talk through some of this and, and ask any questions or, or share any additional thoughts for the reopening committee to consider before potentially bringing this back to you for a vote on the 28th. Anyone?
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Are there, are there students that this creates particular vulnerabilities for, or students that are particularly vulnerable, that we need to have accommodations for as we change our structure?
So the primary thing there, the two areas in which we've had to make accommodations for students are, well, the one area has been in distancing. We've had to afford more distancing to some kids who need greater distancing. We've been able to manage that in the classrooms. Some students have needed mask breaks. On the other end of the spectrum, we've been able to manage that in the classrooms as well. I do anticipate, and as we started to talk to students, I do anticipate that many students, for one reason or another, will decide to leave the masks on for some portion of time after the 7th. And that's not really an accommodation we have to make. We're not allowed to bar them from wearing them, but we do have to be extra careful and extra vigilant in making sure that those students aren't made fun of for any reason or anything like that for continuing to wear their mask. And in terms of staff, we have similar considerations. So staff who have health issues or other concerns where they want to continue to wear the mask, certainly welcome to. Staff, we continue to have Plexiglas and other mitigations. They can distance themselves. We can talk about different sorts of duty assignments if their duty assignments are putting them in close contact with students who might be unmasked and that might be concerning them. These are the kinds of things that we're ready to work on with both staff and students. So yeah, there, there will need to be accommodations for folks. And we're just going to have to be flexible and be ready to offer those as best as we can. Thanks.
So adding to Dee's thought, something like lunch, if you go to just having one lunch and you have students who are concerned about being in such a crowded room, how do you deal with that?
So it means expanding our spaces for lunch into some areas that traditionally we might not wanted to have had lunch in. So over the years, we've been adding, you know, different quiet spaces, different study spaces into lunch. We have to look at spaces, I don't know if Mr. Thornton and his operations crew is listening to me, they're not going to like me saying this, but we might have to look at spaces like our auditorium and like our little theater to be spaces where students can have lunch and space out from each other more appropriately. We might have to start to think about how we offer classroom settings for lunch that are supervised. But we can combine that with all kinds of programming. If this is a time of day when clubs or other groups can meet together in a classroom, you can have a small group eating, space them out, and they can feel much more comfortable. Could be a way that we can get students re-engaged in some of those things. You run a movie in the little theater and invite students into the little theater for lunch, or a talk, like we've done before. So it involves really using our space a lot more maximally and outside, much more. So we're looking at how we can increase seating, both inside and outside, using the fieldhouse and other areas differently for lunch. So increasing the footprint of lunch. The trouble there is that that increases the sanitization demands on lunch. So everything's a give and take on that. And that's where, when you start to use spaces like the fieldhouse or the little theater or the, or the auditorium, particularly those last two, or the IMC, these are difficult areas to clean and you have very little time to turn them over to be ready for Block III class. So we've got some things to work on there, but I'm confident, you know, we've got a lot of folks working on different ways to, to, to expand that and give kids spacing opportunities in lunch if they want it. All right. If, if nothing else, I will, you know, if there's other feedback from the board or any other thoughts, by all means, please share them with me or share them with the members of the reopening committee. The reopening committee is being re-chartered on the agenda tonight to continue these discussions. So you can see that under the organizational items where you have, let's see, the reopening committee is Mr. Davidson, Mrs. Hughes, and Mrs. O'Donnell, with Mr. Richard as the chair. All right, just some last few things from me here, and then I'll turn the meeting over to the committee reports with your thanks for your patience here. Working on our school calendar for next year. And I hope to have that for you, for approval at the end of the month or even, you know, soon into, into March perhaps. There's a bill working its way through the legislature right now that we're waiting to see what happens. And that's a bill that allows additional flexibility for us to use a virtual day in response to inclement weather. Right now, we're not allowed to do that under, except under very specific circumstances. This would allow us to make wider use of virtual days in the event of winter weather. What that could do is allow us to cut back on the number of emergency days that we have on our calendar. And that would give us more flexibility to ensure that we can include everything. For example, we'd love to be able to put Juneteenth on the calendar as a holiday for the school. That's the 16th of June next year, Juneteenth marking the end of slavery. New Jersey holds that as a holiday on the third Friday in June. If we get some relief on the virtual days, we can, we can do that very quickly. And if, if not, we, we have to go back to the drawing board a little bit and just see, see where we can fit, fit that onto our calendar. But that is a priority for us moving into next year. Few more items and then we can move on. And this last one is, is a, is a good one. Each year, we mark a week in February, this year is February 7th through 11th as National School Counseling Week. We're always, you know, I'm, I'm always sharing how thankful and grateful we are to our students, school counselors and our student assistant counselors. And I don't want these thoughts right now to diminish from that ever-present gratitude. I mean, this is a moment to mark and be grateful for their contributions, but we are always grateful for the contributions of our school counselors working with Dr. Zerewiki in our counseling office. They're always the, the tip of the spear on, on our individualization and wellness efforts. And we just, you know, thank you, counselors, for your continued efforts through a very difficult time. We have a resolution on the agenda here and we're asking for your approval tonight on that, so that we can express our admiration and thanks in that formal way. We've got our HIB and suspension report. I am asking you to move on the two HIBs that I presented in closed session last time. And under the Counseling Rec, Counseling Week recognition, you have the two HIBs. And then in the agenda later, you have two organizational items. One is to file the HIB self-assessment that Mr. Brant, Mr. Strata presented on last month. We now have to file that to the state. And then the two ad hoc committees to convene, one is the reopening committee and one is a Board Professional Learning Committee, which we're looking forward to, you know, potentially planning a retreat before the end of the school year for the board to continue its, its work in learning. And this group will, will work on specking that out with us. And that is all. Thank you for your patience. Thank you to Dr. Aradondo for her report. And I turn it back to you, Mrs. Hughes. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Before we move to our first residence forum, can I have a motion to approve the resolution to recognize National School Counseling Week?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Have a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Bluffield?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nicol?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And on behalf of the board, thank you to everybody in the counseling department for all the hard work they do. Can I now have a motion to affirm the two HIBs that Dr. Moore reported to us in our last meeting, 021 and 022?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bluffield?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nicol?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Before we move on to our committee reports, we'll have our first residence forum. This is for public comment on any action items on the agenda. If anybody would like to speak on an action item on the agenda, please come up to the podium and state your Yeah, I was just about to say, before any members of the public speak, we were going to give everybody the opportunity, as you know, everybody has, you have a five minutes to speak for a total of 30 minutes for each session. Last time, we sort of gave notice at five minutes, just to give folks the opportunity to better organize their thoughts and have more time to sort of wrap up. We're going to give notice at four minutes, just so folks know that their time is sort of winding down.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Sandy Ostrander, and I'm from East Amwell. And I actually was reviewing the agenda, and I just recently came across and reviewed the long-range facility plan budget. And I would like to know, and perhaps when you are discussing this on the agenda, you would be able to provide us, the public, with information and justification for the replacing of, and renovation of several line items on the budget. Some of them that I had noted were the bleacher replacement, which is $1,250,000, the screening behind the bleachers, which is $75,000, the paving of the IMC lot, which is $2,250,000. And also on the second page, there's over $2 million allocated for the renovation of the locker rooms and team rooms in the 910 building, the bathroom renovations in the 910 building at $1.375 million, as well as renovating the locker rooms in the fieldhouse at $2 million. That's, just seems like an absorbent amount of money. And I'd like to know what justification there is for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ostrander. Is there anyone else who has comment on action items on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to our committee reports. Oh, we have the organizational items. Let's move on those first. So as Dr. Moore indicated, we have two committees, the reopening ad hoc committee, which is sort of being brought back to life. That has been in existence for the past two years. Mr. Richard is going to chair that with Mr. Davidson, Ms. O'Donnell, and myself. And then we have a motion for Board Professional Learning Committee ad hoc, which is basically for our board retreat. We're looking to do another retreat again, like we did last summer, which I think was pretty successful. So we've put together a, an ad hoc committee of board members to formulate goals and an agenda for that retreat, either late spring or summer. So those are the two committees. So can I have a motion to approve those two ad hoc committees?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about those committees? Okay, hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bluffield?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nicol?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And as Dr. Moore indicated in his superintendent report, we have our 2020, 2021 HIV self-assessment report to submit to the NJ DOE. So can I have a motion to authorize that submission, please?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bluffield?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nicol?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to our committee reports. Mr. Richard, can we hear from Student Life and Program, please?
Yes, Student Life and Program Committee met last week. Ms. Cangelosie-Hayte explained that Mrs. Long, who is vice principal here, was seeking board approval for action research project, a project required at the culmination of her two-year standard principal certification process. Ms. Long's proposal includes examining the ASPIRE program and sources of success within the program. The project includes surveying students with parent guardian permission, and this requires board approval. We also have information on three policies that need to be approved for first reading. First policy invol, all three policies, by the way, are mandated by the state. They're primarily revisions of older policies. First policy regards reporting violence, vandalism, harassment, imitation, bullying, alcohol, and other offenses. And the second policy, it's a high school graduation policy, and it has been revised to include recently adopted revisions by the New Jersey State Board of Education for the graduation assessment requirements for the classes of 2023, 24, and 25. The last policy is a student assessment policy. It has been revised to reflect the recently adopted revisions by the New Jersey State Board of Education to the Standards and Assessment Administrative Code. Having said that, I'd like to move the policies for the first reading for approval tonight.
A second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bluffield?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nicol?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Nicol, can we have an update on ONT, please?
Yes, Operations and Transportation met on Tuesday, February 8th. There's a few items here. We talked about some construction projects. But there are some, there are four items here we're looking to take action on tonight. Capital projects, some construction projects, parental agreement for transportation, basketball grant, as well as two policies on first reading, policy number 6422 and 6470. We have some additional items on here. Our financial, comprehensive financial report, where we received audit recommendations of none and corrective action of none. We have some board budget objectives. We're looking to approve our long-range facilities plan, looking to go out for RFP for school, medical inspector, also to appoint insurance broker, and some, and a professional service provider for educational consultant. On that, I'd like to move items H1 through H4.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on any of those items?
I'll share in, in response to the questions from Ms. Ostrander. Thank you for those. We have, so this is an up for vote tonight. So this is a, a plan that's on the agenda for approval on the 28th. And the multi-year long-range facilities plan is constantly evolving. Projects go on it, projects come off of it. So anything beyond the first couple of years is sometimes a little hazy for us, and, and those numbers are estimates based on the kinds of costs that we've seen in other schools and in the past here for those kinds of programs. And we have seen increases in construction from materials costs and things like that, but it is just by itself, without those increases, really expensive stuff to do. Everything that's on here is either an upgrade to better serve our students in a, in a more innovative kind of educational perspective, like these science lab upgrades. Everything that's on here is either an upgrade to better serve our students in a, in a more innovative kind of educational perspective, like these science lab upgrades, or the 21st century classroom upgrades, or it's a required thing that we might need to do in terms of maintenance or replacement for something that might be time, time for that. So the, the bleacher replacements on the home side and the screening behind those bleachers, it's time for that work. We have, the paving is something that we're constantly doing in phases across the, across the campus, and the IMC lot is the next one up. We've been doing paving projects over the past couple of years. One of the considerations we have there is as paving settles, we get drainage that settles in, and that has really disruptive impacts on, you know, when, when the drainage is pooling, it has really disruptive impacts on operations here and also can create flooding hazards. So these things are quite expensive. Ms. Ostrander, I don't know if I answered all of your questions, but we, we can connect with you and talk more specifically about any other things that you have as well. But yeah, construction stuff on a campus like ours is, is definitely a pricey, pricey proposition.
Dr. Moore, just to clarify, these are high-end estimates. These aren't like, we've gotten estimates from anybody, and this is what the numbers look like. This is giving us some space?
Yeah.
To hopefully come in underneath.
Absolutely. And in fact, sometimes these estimates aren't even, as you look out on these further years on the plan, these aren't even estimates that are, are going to look anything like what we might be asking to put on here down the road a little bit. So Ms. Spitzer, is there anything to add to, any, any thoughts on how, how we estimate those things? I mean, basically, it's, what is this costing other schools right now, and what have these kinds of things cost us in the past, correct?
Correct. And it also includes all of the prep work to get to the actual project. So it includes architectural engineering, and it's the whole cost of the project, not specifically just the work to be done. So it's the whole, whole piece.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone have any other comments on the board? Nope. Okay, hearing none. I think we had a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motions carry.
Thank you. Mr. Davidson, can we have a summary, please, from Personnel Committee?
Yes. This meeting, we have 13 items for, on the committee, I think probably 10 of them will require a motion for action. Starting off, we have resignation, and then we have a appointments with some new positions or positions moved around. And I'd like to call on Dr. Moore to give a summary on how we're moving some positions to and from the HR department and the business department to improve the efficiency of both of them.
So how about during discussion, I'll chime in with some thoughts on that, or would you like me to do that right now?
Why don't we read, reach out right now, and then we can?
Absolutely. So we, we had these new positions, bookkeeper, purchasing accounts, payable specialist, pension benefit specialist. We had those new positions brought to you last month for approval. And our discussion then was about, you know, some cost-effective ways to move different duties that were going on in the Human Resources Office over into the business office. These were payroll-facing kinds of things. So for example, pension and benefits is something enrollment, tracking people's contributions to those, tracking district contributions. When those things exist in the HR office and then across the parking lot in the business office, it's, it causes some potential inefficiency, and it also is, you know, all the communication across that parking lot, then to get all of that correct is, is really degrading the district's ability to do it as, as efficiently as possible. What we see in a lot of business offices across the state is that those kinds of functions are in the business office because they have direct impact on payroll. And so that's what we've done here. That's the best example of, of a shift from the HR office to the business office is through that pension and benefit specialist. And that will allow us now to continue on with some restructuring that can ensure that our HR office is focused on retention and recruitment and staff support, and that the business office is able to ensure the efficient movement of all of the information regarding benefits and pension and benefits. Aside from that, what we also have here is, we had a retirement in the business office that allowed us to imagine how three positions could become two. So where we had three individuals, we now have a bookkeeper and a purchasing accounts payable specialist. That used to actually be three folks. So the business office isn't getting a new position with the pension and benefit specialist. It's actually, we've rearranged duties in there to have kind of a, a flat, right? We've got same number of folks now. And the HR office, we can now turn to for some, for some restructuring. Does that help, Mr. Davidson?
Thank you very much, Dr. Moore. Along with these contractual appointments, we have perdeem appointments, which are substitutes and chaperones for the ski club. We have next hourly appointments. As you can see, variety of people, after hours and tutorial, and stipends, coach, a new coach, a boy's assistant coach being given a stipend, professional development to the staff. These are conventions and courses that our staff is going to. Some revisions, and then policies. And these policies are mandated. They're valuable, they're available for you to look at. And let's see, a leave of absence for a bus driver and salary guide changes. This is where people are earning degrees or credits toward degrees, and for accomplishing them, they get a modification to their salary according to the, our agreement in the contract. Item 12 is some advisors. We have Magic the Gathering Club, which is a new one. We have an advisor for that. And finally, educators workshop for a number of people. That gets us to item, the last item, which is, let's see, item 13, I believe. So I would like to move items 1 through 10 on the Personnel Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Just one thing I'd like to add. Thank you, Mr. Davidson, from Personnel. We also discussed the Personnel Committee investigating a new superintendent evaluation tool. I think we've all been a bit dissatisfied with the one we've been using as not being very user-friendly. So the Personnel Committee will take on that task of looking into maybe a better tool for us to use in our annual superintendent evaluation.
May I make a comment?
Yeah, of course.
I just wanted to make sure that there is no misunderstanding. This is, this action has nothing to do with our satisfaction with Dr. Moore, which is, is very high. What it is, is that the, the current tools that we've been using for the evaluation of the superintendent, and it, it is used rather widely, is very complicated and time-consuming for board members. So some of the board members have said, is there anything that is simpler and easier to use? And the Personnel Committee is going to investigate that without us sacrificing the quality of what we're doing. But the fact of, that it's so time-consuming has caused, in the past, the board to be rather not on time with the completion of these through nine members, and we, we want to improve our performance and get this done in a timely manner.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. And did I lose my mic? Now there I am. And, and not only from a timeliness standpoint and efficiency, I think there's been agreement on the board that the standards that are set forth in that evaluation don't necessarily reflect what we're looking for in our evaluation. So it's not just so much that it takes a lot of time. We don't find it to be a very effective tool. So we'll do some digging into that and hopefully find a better evaluation process for this year. So can I have a roll call vote? I believe we have a motion and a second on the Personnel Report.
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And do we have a report from the Racism Equity Diversity Committee?
Yes, I can give a brief update.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell.
The committee met in person on February 8th to discuss the next steps in creating anti-racism, anti-bias equity policy. Those initial steps included a framework for policy research developed by the HCEA Anti-Racism Committee, working with Dr. Moore and with collaboration with the Teachers College of Columbia University. Today, there was a follow-up on that discussion. Dr. Warren and Scott Sacks from the HCEA Anti-Racism Committee met with myself, Rob Richard, Scott Cohen, and Dr. Moore to outline student engagement and policy research and development. Today's meeting will be followed up this Wednesday by bringing students to the table to assign groups and begin the policy research. And this is an important step, we believe, because students are the ones that will be impacted by this policy. And I think we can agree, it's the, the shared hope of everyone doing this work, that, that they have an active role in this work. And lastly, we, we discussed some ways that we can, when we meet with students, try to make this a little bit attractive to them, because while it's, it's important work, and I'm sure they know that, meeting with board members and discussing policy can be a little less than exciting. So I think our teachers are going to really do a good job communicating to them what we're looking for and what we want to do.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell. Anybody have any comments? And since there's no action, we'll just move on to additional business. Does any board member have any new or additional business to bring to the table? Nope. Okay, hearing none. We will now move on to our second residence forum for general comments. Just want to remind the public that everybody has up to five minutes to speak for a total of 30. As I mentioned earlier, at the four-minute mark, we'll just give notice so that the speaker will have the opportunity to start wrapping up and not be put in the position at exactly five minutes to stop the, the conversation, so. Mr. Fish, welcome.
Thank you. Happy Valentine's Day to you.
To you as well.
Okay, just a little bit regarding you, Mrs. Hughes, and a little Facebook characterization. When you chose to run for the board, there's some statements that really pop out. Says she cares deeply about the quality of education for all students. Lisa also poses the necessary personality characteristics to drive positive change. Average reader, keep current on educational trends, develop policy, ask the hard questions, challenge the status quo, and make informed decisions. In addition, communication skills are exceptional. Excellent listener, who thoroughly questions and fully considers options before acting. Insightful, fair, even-tempered, collaborative, and yet not afraid to stand up for her ideals. Lisa is carefully listened to and is aware already of concerns related to Hunter and Central Regional High School and its Board of Ed. She cares about the quality of the Board of Ed and improving their communication with the public. She will ensure the communication between the Board of Ed, administrators, teachers, parents is transparent, honest, and clear. She will work to keep our community informed. Having children at Hunter and Central will allow her to have finger on the pulse of everyday concerns and access to parents, teachers, and administrators. So my question is, where is this Lisa Hughes? Once again, all of, all of us parents here, we all communicate, we all talk, and we feel like, week in and week out, anything we bring to you is falling on deaf ears. So we all talked about what the Board of Ed's job is to represent the public and the parents and have the kids going to the, and having the kids that are going to Central. Never once in your response do you ever acknowledge that the information that we bring to you may be good information or is helpful, and yeah, let me look into this more. So the way you're going about this, we feel is totally opposite of what you ran on to get this position. So. At the last board meeting, Dr. Moore stated it's the student's responsibility to track down the teacher and learn. No, it's not. It's the school's responsibility to provide an education to our kids, especially for the ones that are being removed unwillingly and are healthy in regards to the contact tracing. So what I'm getting at is basically many schools in our area, Clinton Public and North Hunter and High School, what they do is, forget COVID aside, if they cannot get into school that day for one reason or another, let's say the person just broke their leg and they're at home, guess what? They can log in on their normal class schedule and watch the class and listen to the lecture. I've pointed out how my, my son, when he was contact traced, three or four of his classes were all lecture. There is no reason why we can't move forward with this. No reason at all. So. So what I'm asking, I know I'm, I'm rehashing an old statement, but Lisa, I pointed all this stuff out to you, and you say, come to me with this stuff, and we'll look more into it, and all I got back from you is a Dr. Moore textbook answer. What, I, I talk to every single one of these parents. You have kids. You, can you explain to me that that is not the best option for our kids, that they are not, you know, that they could just log in during their class time? Right? That makes the most sense. I know I got one minute.
Yeah, thank you.
So anyways, I, I just can't, your response is awful. It really is. And on, what I'm going to end on is, I just saw your reopening thing. You guys are all over the map as far as your policy. You present, Dr. Moore, up here, hey, we're now in the yellow. If that's the case, and we're in the yellow, let's follow your policy that's in place. And masks should be optional. What Governor Murphy did? He overstated his power. His executive power ran out last Friday. This March 7th is total BS. So listen, you have a policy in place. You keep coming back on that policy every single month, every single board meeting. We're in the yellow. So guess what? Optional. Don't take this away from the kids. Did you watch the Super Bowl last night? It was a good game, wasn't it? That's California, LA. You know how their policies were. Guess what? No one had masks on there. So unmask our kids, who are the least vulnerable to this whole thing. I won there on my five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Fish.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before the next speaker, I just want to make a statement. The board understands that folks are passionate about their positions. We are here to listen. We want to hear everybody's opinions. Our policy is to not respond during public session. So I would ask that, moving forward, if you're looking for a response or an engagement at this point, this isn't the time for the board to do it. Okay? We are here to listen to public comment. We want to hear what you have to say. So please make your comment. At the end, once public session is closed, there is an opportunity for the board, during board comments, to respond or raise issues if they feel appropriate. So I just want to remind everybody that it is the board's policy not to respond to the public. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, hi.
My name is Lisa Santangelo, and I am a resident of Reddington Township. Many of the parents have come up here, meeting after meeting, and poured their hearts out to you regarding the COVID protocols and how they've disrupted their kids' lives on so many levels. We've cited many studies, Johns Hopkins is one, that contradict what Central is doing. The main response from the board is that you take your direction from the New Jersey Department of Health. Since we've been in this pandemic for almost two years now, why haven't we heard from the school physician or any medical professional? Why hasn't any of them attended these meetings, just like Fauci did in the beginning of the pandemic almost daily, as well as many doctors since then? It would be so helpful to be able to ask all of the questions that we have to better understand the COVID protocols. ask all of the questions that we have to better understand the COVID protocols from a doctor's perspective as it relates to this age group. Although the public forums generally do not have a dialogue, setting up a special Q and A session as part of the agenda would further the communication between the parents and the board. If a pandemic lasting almost two years doesn't warrant doing this, what does? I would imagine your only reasons for wanting to dedicate so much of your time to be on the board is for the sole reason of the well-being of our kids. Yet, meeting after meeting, you cherry pick the questions you wish to answer, completely avoid other ones, or point us to other people who are not accessible to us. I ask myself, if I was on the board, what would I do, especially during these challenging times? I would want to hear about how the kids are doing, either directly from them or from their parents. I would want to work towards solving the problems. When I hear that a student had to repeat a class, or an A student is now getting zeros, or a student doesn't want to order a yearbook because there are no memories, or there's starting to be fights, physical fights now, this week, in the hallways because of these disruptions, you have to ask yourself, was it worth it? I'm sorry, but you simply can't answer yes when there is a 99.998 survival rate amongst these kids. I am appealing to you to stand up for these kids. Otherwise, we are looking at them not getting the education they deserve, are entitled to, and we have been raising this flag for a very long time now. We need you to do the right thing for the kids. We need you to work with the parents. We need you to step up. Following the protocols that are ineffective, inconsistent, and nonsensical is not the answer. We're asking the board to hear us. We're asking the board to work with us, and we're asking the board to help our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dr. Renee Foster. I'm a 25-year practicing doctor of chiropractic specializing in pediatrics and sports injuries. My son is a freshman here, and I have an eighth grader in the Reddington school system. Dr. Moore has been kind enough to interact with me from the beginning of the school year, when the masking was implemented on the school. I'm intimately involved in legislature. I had a conversation with Senator Charfemberger today. He notified me that he has a bill on the floor to try to limit Governor Murphy's executive powers because he's overstepping his executive authority. He does not have the support of his legislatures for this last recent decision to extend the emergency order, but he was given these powers independently, and now we're suffering for it. The day he announced that the mask mandate would extend another 30 days, it was actually over. He did that on his own accord. He did not do that in support of the voice of the people. There have been so many meetings in Trenton where this has been expressed, but he's functioning independently. Even his legislators are frustrated that he won't listen to them. I'm here today because I want you to know that I'm one of the people who's personally responsible for encouraging the kids to have a walkout recently. I would never tell my child they have to do this, but I encourage them because I believe that they should truly embrace free thinking. I teach my children to question things when they don't seem right. You know, there's a study that I presented at the Senate Oversight Committee meeting when they were trying to attempt to mandate the hepatitis B vaccine in 1999, and they kept utilizing the argument that they're relying on science. I presented a scientific study that showed that the wingspan in relationship to the body proportion of the bumblebee means that the bumblebee can't fly. Nobody told that to the bumblebee. So we have to be able to apply some common sense. The common sense that I brought to the floor from the beginning of the year was, my son attended workouts in the workout room. By all means, I'm not trying to use this as punishment means. I love that the kids are getting exercise. I believe that nutrition and the health and well-being of the kids is paramount in this, and we've gotten really far away from that, but that's for another day. There have been no limitations in the weight room. The kids have had no social distancing. They're not masking. They're essentially in this bubble. I think it's great. I think they're healthy, but as soon as they step out of that weight room, they step into the hallway, they have to wear a mask. That's just not common sense. Like, either we really believe that they're in danger. I don't, and I know this is something I said at the beginning of the year, because we talked about how many times the kids were allowed in the weight room. I think it's great they're there. I'm not looking for them to be punished, but I think that, just like saying, well, the kids eventually will not have to wear masks in school, but then when they go on the bus, suddenly it's dangerous again. Where's our common sense? I mean, you guys are supposed to be reflecting our feelings and our wishes, and I don't feel like anybody here represents what I think or feel. And I understand you guys have had a really hard year. I truly respect the time. I sit at home a lot, and I listen to these meetings because I want to know what's going on. And the time that you guys put in and the energy, I respect that immensely. But I implore you to please apply common sense. Our kids are functioning one way in the weight room, and then suddenly it's dangerous in the classroom. Just let people parent their children and use common sense. People have stayed home when they felt sick in the past, and we've just gotten so far away from that. I just want to encourage you, and also that, I understand, that, Mrs. Hughes, that we're not going to get feedback here. I've talked to enough boards. I've lost track. But that you do answer people specifically. I mean, people are coming here to, and I am directing my attention to these people because this is who you guys are supposed to be representing. So when they do ask specific questions, it means a lot when specific details are given back in an email format. I don't think that's asking too much. So I just want to implore one more time, please use common sense. Please let parents parent. And I think that you will be happily surprised that we could do this together for real and really come together. I'd love to see that. And I would love to see that before the 7th, because really, it's one man's decision. I called the, I know my time is up. I called the governor's office, and I did try to ask them to give us the data that they were making this decision on. They were unable. They deferred me to the Department of Health. I called eight times. I was never able to talk to a human. I am still yet, and I have put it in writing. I'm still waiting for the data that they have based this decision on. So far, it's been just Governor Murphy's decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Foster.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Jarrett. My daughter is a senior here, and I have a couple questions regarding the budget, so I'll start with that first. And it's related to the ESTER fund money. I want to make sure I have the correct information before I go further with any comments, so that will be for another time. But for right now, I would like to see an itemized breakdown of the ESTER funds. I would also like to know if the total ESTER funds granted here were $1,037,066. I know there's ESTER 1, ESTER 2, and ESTER 3, and the funds were, as far as I know, allotted, given on different dates. So if someone can get back to me with that at some point, I would like to know that. I would also like to know that if there is an itemized breakdown of ESTER funds on the website, where I can find this information? I tried to look for it for myself and couldn't find it. In terms of other budget questions, I'm just wondering, when was the IMC renovated, and what is, what was the cost for that? And I believe that was during the past few years, so I'm not sure if that's done, and if that was listed on any specific budget, and the dates for that. Couple things, going back to the anti-racism policy that was brought up before. My question is, what type of content is expected to go into that policy? And being that you are involving the students in that, I'm wondering, how will the students be picked to participate in that? I just would like a little more detail on what that policy, what you're looking for that to entail. Other topics. So in regard to the plan for, you know, moving forward with the mandates and whatnot, I just wanted to bring up to your attention other districts in New Jersey. I'll start with Middletown Township Public Schools. Their return, their revised December 1st, it's, I'm sorry, December 13th, 2021, they had a masking optional unless required by law policy, and I believe they've changed that. And they don't have the quarantine or exclusion contact trace protocol. That is voluntary. This has been going on there. So there's Franklin Public Schools, January 26th. They also did option to keep their child at home for recommended quarantine of five days, but again, that's optional. So my question is, you know, other schools are giving these protocols. We're in the same state, and they are under similar guidelines, but you've created your own guidelines that are much different from other schools. I'm not going to, I have a lot of different schools. But why can't we change and make this a better place for the kids? We've already, we're dealing with these kids being depressed and, you know, going to counseling. I don't want to mention the suicide rate at the school for the past three years. I have three kids. You know, I have two older kids who've had friends here who've committed suicide. So my concern is really on the welfare and mental health of these kids, more than any other thing that is going on in terms of curriculum. That should be paramount. That should be priority. This is not benefiting the kids. Prolonging this, for what? Let the masks be optional, you know? And to the woman who spoke previously, I mean, yeah, common sense and logic. It's out the window with this whole thing. My daughter's in track. No mask in the weight room. I'm fine with that. Good. It's life. But come on, they stepped out of that weight room, and they have to follow these rules to make them into fear. We should not be instilling fear in these kids. There's no reason to brainwash them. That's, that's all I want, I want to say.
Thank you.
But regarding answers to budget, can I get that at some point?
Sure. Once public session.
Hold on, I'm sorry, Ms. Hughes. Ms. Jarrett, you and I have a meeting tomorrow, don't we?
We do.
Okay, so we'll discuss all of your questions then.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jarrett. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to speak in the residence forum? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close public forum and move on to board comments. Before I open up to the rest of the board, I do just want to make a statement. I can speak on behalf of myself, and I think on behalf of the board. Anybody can certainly disagree with me after. Every speaker that comes to that podium, we listen to. Every piece of email that comes through, whether it be Saturday morning at 8:00 AM with links and podcasts and articles, are read by me and considered by me and shared with the board. So I just want to be clear that we listen. We do dig in to the information that is provided to us, either in person or by email. Does anybody else on the board have any comments they'd like to make? Yes, Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes, I just wanted to echo that. I feel really confident having you as our board president, because in these early days, all I've seen is really excessive, in a good way, communication and follow-up on parent emails. And I think the same goes for Dr. Moore. The amount of time and respectful consideration that I'm aware of that gets put into responding to queries and issues is, I think it's noteworthy. And I appreciate both of you for that work, and it's hard to hear that, you know, someone would say that it falls short. So that's pretty much all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Any other board members have any comments? Yes, Mr. Fowler.
Thank you. First of all, I actually want to start by recognizing the public that came up tonight, and by having a wonderful discussion, presenting everything in your timely format. Just wanted to recognize that and that it's appreciated. I'll also echo everything that I've been seeing since I've joined. I've read. I've been listening to podcasts, so we are paying attention. To the board, I do know a thing or two about e-learning, so if there is an interest in me helping out with the school, investigating opportunities to have a better e-learning platform that will allow for hybrid, I think that also fits into having more flex days in the calendar that Dr. Moore mentioned. So I'm happy to step up and volunteer to that if anybody else has interest in digging into it. That's all.
Thank you.
Oh, one more, I'm sorry.
That's good.
I would imagine if they posed, if the public brought questions specifically for the physician, we could present them and get an answer in somewhat of a timely format?
Yes. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd like to echo what Mr. Fowler said. I should have said it earlier. I thank everybody for staying within their time period. I've had some conversations through correspondence with some members of the public who have spoken before, and I do appreciate staying within that five-minute time limit. We talked a little bit about, you know, being cut off at five minutes and that being difficult for folks. So that's why we thought it'd be a better system for everybody, just to get a little bit of warning, to start wrapping up. But it does make it easier for all of us if people stay within their five minutes, and it gives everybody the opportunity to be heard. So we are grateful for that, and we thank the public who spoke tonight. So with that, I'll close public session, and we're going to convene into executive session to discuss HIBs legal matters for approximately half hour, 45 minutes, with no action being taken upon our return. Do we move on that? Do we move? No. Yes. Okay. Everyone in favor of moving into public, executive session?
Aye.
Thank you.